Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers and on the county board's website. There's also an automatic external defibrillator that's available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend is absent. Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, and Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, October 19th, 2021, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes four to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolution. Resolution setting the tax rate levies for necessary taxes as provided by the Nebraska Revenue Statute 771601. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. Motion passes five to zero.
We have three protests. A protest of personal property penalty for Brook Hill Country Club. Good morning, Mr. Goodwilly.
Commissioners, Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds. Good morning to you all. There are three protest items E, F, and G. They are all essentially the same. These are late filing penalties for business personal property tax returns. Statutorily, the ability to abate those penalties is limited to penalties incorrectly imposed or wrongly calculated. None of these protests alleges either of those things. They are the usual sort of, well, we had internal personnel matters and so we filed late kinds of things. So they've not raised an issue that would enable you to reduce or abate the penalty.
Is there anyone here from Brook Hill Country Club or Helgett Gas Products?
I'm here from Helgett Gas Products.
Okay. Do you want to come forward, please?
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's James Septak with Helgett Gas Products. You know, one of the things he did mention, you know, is, you know, that we did file late. One of the big reasons we did file late is we provide medical oxygen to the area. So a lot of hospitals, things of that nature, we provide gases to. I mean, it says right in our name. We've had lack of drivers, lack of employees, to say the least, and due to COVID, some of these issues have been, you know, we have people stepping outside to help do deliveries, helping areas that they are not assigned to. And due to this, you know, it's one of those things that, he's right, we missed the deadline for. That's why I'm here today, you know, is to ask for leniency on that. COVID didn't affect us last year. This year, it's affected us greatly. So, you know, that's why, you know, I'm here for leniency in regards to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Goodwilly, will you state again the reasons that we can eliminate or provide?
Provide relief here?
Yeah.
Absolutely. It's if the penalty was incorrectly imposed, wrongly imposed, or incorrectly calculated. Those are the two avenues. And I suspect the legislature didn't allow for more because I don't think they wanted to put county boards in the position of deciding which reasons, you know, after the fact, which reasons were waiver worthy and which ones were not.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
How many dollars are we talking?
I thought you might ask that. There are two business entities that Helgett files returns on. The first one's penalty is relatively small, $93.56. Now, these are approximates. I'm using last year's levy rate multiplied by the value reported on the returns and then multiplied by the penalty percentage. So depending on what levy rates are approved today, it may vary a little bit, but not too much, I don't think. So for one of the entities, it's $93.56. The other one reported $271,000 worth of value, so the penalty on that will be about $1,500.
Okay. And if a motion is made to, you know, here not to comply with this in favor of the gas company, the gas product company, we could face a lawsuit, I would assume, possibly, by someone.
Well, you know, statutorily, there are a couple of things going on. Certainly, one of the things our office would have to weigh is, do we want to appeal the board's decision to the Tax Equalization Review Commission? And if we do that, I suspect there's a fair chance your decision will be reversed. But we won't know that unless it happens. The other thing I've always been intrigued with is there is a statute that provides for lawsuits against boards and commissions that wrongfully abate penalties, or, excuse me, wrongfully abate taxes. I've never seen one of those in actual fact, but I suppose if the statute exists out there, you could have some citizen that might say, gee, you know, I don't think it's right that those guys got a sweetheart deal on their penalty and I'm paying full boat on my property taxes. But that's all speculation, too. So I don't, I mean, it isn't like the ground is going to open up and swallow you if this is what you do, but there could be some ramifications.
Well, I'm gonna probably do what one of my best friends would do if he was here, and I think you know who I'm talking about, Mr. Goodwilly. Under the circumstances that the gentleman said from the Helga Gas Products Company, my thought is to not assess the penalty to them is my motion.
Does that include the Brook Hill Country Club as well?
No, I'm not going to include that. There's no one here that commented on that. I just would take the F and G ones.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor to waive the penalties for F and G, which is Helgett Gas Products, and uphold the protest on the personal penalty for Brook Hill Country Club. Is that okay to add that into your?
Sure.
And is the second okay with that? So there's a motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Is there any other questions or comments? Please vote.
One moment, please.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
So if we are inclined to just vote in favor of the resolutions to deny the protests, can we divide this question to do that?
Say that one more time.
Well, as it's currently proposed, it's all in, which means that there are two waivers and a...
Correct.
And a support. So I'm inclined to support all three. Could we divide the question so that we can vote on them individually?
Sure. Unless you want to add the third one and if the maker of the motion is okay with that.
No, I'm inclined to not waive the penalty on all three.
Okay. All right. Then, sorry, we have to redo the motion.
Can we just vote on them individually?
We have a motion then to waive the protest of penalties for Helgett Gas. That's F and G. There was a motion and a second by Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Rogers. We'll vote on that one first.
I'll let you know when we're ready here.
Control one and Elliot.
Well, you gotta, you gotta... All right. Thanks. Thank you, Commissioners. We're ready.
Again, the motion is to waive the penalties on F and G. Please vote.
Motion passes three to two. Commissioners Boyle and Kavanaugh voting no, other Commissioners voting yes.
The next is Item E, protest of personal property penalty for Brook Hill Country Club. What's the will of the board?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Sorry, Madam Chair. The motion to approve is to just leave the...
Right, to leave it as is.
Okay. All right.
All right. Please vote.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay. Thanks, Commissioners. Commissioner Morgan. Okay. Motion passes five to zero.
Next are the resolutions. We have two. The first is a request for the Board to approve the Treasurer's recommendation to deny Application Form 457 for vehicle tax exempt status. The tax exempt Form 457 for this 2021 Ford Escape was received more than 30 days past the purchase date, and we cannot accept the form submitted after this deadline per the Treasurer's office. What's the will of the board? All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Anyone here from Red Cross? All right. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
And Item I, approving application for tax exemption Form 457 on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the County Treasurer and to include adjournment. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Moment, please. Okay. Thank you. Motion passes five to zero.
Next is the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend is absent. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item two, citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the report from the Director of Correct... Oh, I thought we did, sorry. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, September 14th. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
And now we'll move to the report from the Director of Corrections. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have before you our report for the month of September. Turning to enclosure number one, Administrative Services. After the third month of the fiscal year, we are over budget by $244,498. I will point out that there are some things that we held out of our budget when it was approved with the anticipation of ARPA funds being able to be used. Those have not yet been applied to our budget. $417,019 was spent on overtime in September. That's a decrease of about $36,000. However, this is still much higher than normal. We did implement some temporary practices to reduce the amount of overtime. We started that in about the middle of the month to reduce the frequency of mandatory overtime. These strategies have proved helpful most days out of the week. However, our staff on the weekends are still being subjected to fairly frequent mandatory overtime. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. The 24/7 sobriety program continues to enjoy robust utilization. 62 individuals were placed on the program. There were 3,370 breath tests conducted. 11 were positive for alcohol. 14, there were 14 no-shows for alcohol breath testing, and the overall compliance was 99.9%. 59 individuals were monitored for 1,315 days of SCAM monitoring. There were zero no-shows, one tampering violation, and zero alcohol violations, and that compliance rate was also 99.9. There were 744 saliva drug tests administered with 122 violations, and there were 25 drug testing patches submitted for testing with three violations. Work release admitted 21 individuals. House arrest admitted 74 individuals. The Reentry Assistance Program, or RAP, admitted 23 individuals. In reentry services and our therapeutic communities in the jail, there were 56 individuals admitted to those programs. Programming in the jail was suspended for approximately three weeks due to a COVID outbreak. Despite that fact, two individuals achieved a GED, including one maximum security inmate who was previously housed in administrative segregation. And I want to just give a little shout out to Heather Robinson, who oversees our educational programs, for taking the initiative to pursue even the most difficult populations for their educational opportunities. This is not something that had happened historically. And for her to be willing to go into a maximum security unit and work with the folks there, that's a really good sign for us. Pretrial Services continues to provide regular information to the courts regarding candidates for bond reduction and early pleas in response to the pandemic. 31 individuals were referred for priority prosecution, saving 224 bed days. 475 individuals were placed on pretrial release. 1,389 individuals were managed on pretrial release over the course of the month with a 97% compliance rate. 55 individuals visited the law library. We continue to participate in an 18-month pilot project to implement the Public Safety Assessment as part of our strategy to enhance our pretrial release supervision and supportive services. Our pretrial case management software system, which is new, is now live with our first actual participants being case managed via this platform. Enclosure number three, Compliance. Our regular annual documentation is being collected for all compliance practices. Enclosure number four, Personnel. Nine officers below the rank of sergeant left employment in September. One lieutenant also retired in September. As an ongoing commitment to improve morale, job satisfaction, overall wellness for our staff, we have administered Part One of a two-part survey. We are soliciting the opinions of our staff regarding what changes we can make that would be most meaningful to them. Over 300 staff participated in Part One of the survey. 11 new correctional officers graduated from the Training Academy on September 24th, and nine new officers are beginning their training as we speak this morning. We'd like to congratulate Lieutenant Tim Smith, who retired in September after a career at the Department of Corrections spanning well over 30 years. Enclosure number five. There were 1,288 admissions. That is a decrease from the previous month. There were 1,328 releases. That is a decrease as well. Our high count was 1,261. Our low count was 1,143. Our average daily population was 1,201, and now it's a slight increase over the previous month. And I am happy to say that we have trended down towards the end of the month and into October. There were 82 custodial bed sanction days. That is a decrease. The U.S. Marshal population decreased and ICE population decreased. The felony pretrial population decreased while the misdemeanor pretrial population increased. Probation violations remain stable, and the female population increased slightly, and we operated four female housing units throughout the month. Enclosure number six, Medical. There were 1,199 intake screenings, and there was 414 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out 23 times for emergency medical care. Eight of those were by 911. There were six hospital admissions, which resulted in a combined 17 days of hospitalization. Enclosure number seven, Mental Health. There were 85 initial psychiatric assessments. There were 78 initial mental health assessments. There were 78 mental health infirmary placements, and 148 individuals were placed on drug and alcohol withdrawal protocols. There were four Board of Mental Health referrals and three referrals to long-term psychiatric facilities. Other noteworthy items, we continue to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. We had five cases of COVID-19 among the incarcerated population in September. This was a significant decrease when we had well over 20 in August. We went from a peak of having 15 housing units quarantined simultaneously in early September to having zero by the end of the month. Those 15, having 15 housing units quarantined at the same time provided a tremendous challenge to our classification staff. There were times when we were using both gymnasiums as housing units and, for the first time, housed people for more than one day in our court holding as a housing unit during, when we had so many beds unusable. So we're grateful to be past that peak for the moment. Approximately 75% of our staff have been vaccinated, and as of September 1st, we have vaccinated 1,243 incarcerated individuals, including 105 who were vaccinated during September. We may have achieved a higher number, but we were forced to cancel one vaccine clinic due to staffing constraints. The good news is, is requests among the incarcerated population to be vaccinated remain strong. We are currently working with Human Resources, County Administration, and the County Attorney's Office to understand the pending presidential executive order mandating COVID-19 vaccinations for federal contractors. Currently, there is much yet to be defined in the rules and regulations pertaining to this order. We do understand that the deadline to be fully vaccinated is December 8th, which means our staff will have had to receive their final shot two weeks prior to that date to be considered fully vaccinated by the deadline. There will be processes for exemption based upon medical advice and religious beliefs. However, we do not have the criteria from the federal government to evaluate those requests at this time. We understand that some of our staff has very strong feelings regarding this action, and we are doing our best to assist them in navigating this process. We are communicating all information to our staff as we receive updated guidance regarding this matter. During September, we entered into a new agreement with the United States Marshal Service that will increase revenue to Douglas County. We also provided ICE with the notice that we will no longer continue to house ICE detainees at the Department of Corrections following the required 120-day notice period. Significant progress has been made on the installation of our new security system. A significant portion of our campus is now covered by the new system, and the vendor believes that this project will be completed several months ahead of the original timeline. We are also getting very close to launching our body-worn cameras as the wiring and installation of the charging stations is underway. We held a Staff Appreciation Day on September 28th, serving meals to our staff on all three shifts. I subjected myself to a pie in the face on all three shifts, and you should be proud of the enthusiasm our staff showed when provided that opportunity. Our staff seemed genuinely pleased with the acknowledgement we gave them that day. It is a small token of what they deserve for continuing to serve our community in the manner in which they do. We will have another Staff Appreciation Day in December, which will be centered around our annual chili cook-off. Also, during September, many of our staff exhibited some amazing responses to multiple medical emergencies, which could have resulted in very unfortunate outcomes. However, due to the swift and skilled response of our medical staff and correctional officers, several lives were saved. And at a future board meeting, I will be bringing some of those individuals involved in those events before you to be recognized publicly. I'm ready for your questions.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any questions for Mike? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Thanks for this. I'm just looking for the ethnic racial breakout, okay, on page 39. As we have noted over the months and years, this continues to reflect a overwhelming minority, majority population in our correction center. Is that right?
That's correct.
And I'm just doing the quick math here, but it appears that 36.27... And, um, I'm just doing the quick math here, but it appears that thirty-six point two-seven percent of the population is white. And the balance, which would be over sixty percent, is black, Hispanic, Indian, Asian, or other, correct?
That is also correct, sir.
That seems to have gone up in terms of the minority, uh, representation, is that right?
I would have to look to verify that, but I do believe over the course of time, those statistics have not improved. And have maybe gotten a little more unbalanced.
It just seems to me that in the least, the most recent months, it, it at least has not been over sixty percent minority representation, and it is now.
Uh, I will have, um, at our next meeting, I will have, uh, our admissions manager run this, run this graph. For a trend over time, instead of a snapshot of the month.
Thank you. There's no enclosure number three, which is dealing with compliance, I'm sure there's a reason for that, but...
Probably, uh, an oversight on my admin's part, I'm guessing. Uh, what I can tell you commissioners, that our compliance, there was no, um, no inspections, no audits, nothing like that went on during the month of September for us to report on that.
Okay, so it'll be coming, I guess?
It'll be coming, yeah.
The satisfaction survey that you mentioned, I think is a good thing. I don't know that we have a copy of that, could you share that with us?
I can very soon, we've been, we've been doing a lot of manual tabulations and, um, we are, I should be able to share that with you, uh, with certainly by the night.
Just the copy itself, rather than the results if I could see that?
Sure, okay, yes, yeah, I can do that.
You know, I, I note that in September, as you indicated, um, nine officers left. Does that include the one retiree, or is that nine plus?
It was nine officers plus a, plus a lieutenant.
Okay, so ten, and in the same month, eleven new officers came on.
Correct.
You know, I guess you'd say that's a net gain of one, kind of. Is that number nine or ten, uh, an average number, is it high, is it low?
It's a little high. I think historically, um, our attrition rate has been six to seven, um, on average. It's, we are, we have had, we had a, I believe August, there was actually a dip where we were very, you know, below average. Um, and this is back above average. Over the summer, we did lose, um, uh, an abundance of officers, unfortunately. Which have, um, we're about, we're probably today with the addition of the eleven, excuse me, the nine officers that began training this morning. Uh, we are probably around twenty-five officers short, though I couldn't, I'd have to look at that for sure.
Yes, um, and I'm sure it's in here, you have the authorized level in the...
One minute.
Actual level, what, what are those, do you, can you shoot me a page on that?
Yes. Page seven.
Seven?
Yeah, page seven. What we were, actually, we were a little over forty officers short, but that does not include the nine that started.
Okay, and that's basically in the corrections officer category, where you're authorized three forty-nine and you have three oh four?
That's correct.
And overall, the complement is you're authorized four hundred and ninety-two overall, and your on-hand complement is four hundred and thirty-one or eighty-seven percent.
That's correct.
The bulk of that shortage is with the corrections officers?
Close to half of that total, but yes.
I think you indicated before that there's a disrepresent, uh, mis, uh, overrepresentation of newer officers, we'll come back.
Commissioner Boyle?
Thanks, Mike. So just a, a few things, I was looking through the graphs and on page thirty-five, you have one of the corrections homeless risk. It looks like there's a twenty percent risk of the, among the average daily population of those folks that could be potentially homeless, is that what that refers to?
That, that is, um, you are correct. So during our booking process, um, folks are screened for being homeless. Or, so this, this, this includes people who are homeless at the time of booking. Or whose housing situation is so tenuous that by the time they get out, they, they are going to be homeless.
So when they, so what do we do with them, it just, what's their disposition?
Well, we have, um, we have, you know, a reentry services program will do everything they can to intervene with these folks. A lot of this depends upon their current charges, um, and, and what, what they're potentially facing. We will do assessments and generate case plans. A lot of times these folks also have mental illness, longstanding mental illness and addiction issues. So coordinating that treatment both inside and outside of the jail are, are, are things that we do quite frequently. The, the, somewhat of the challenge in delivering those services is sometimes these folks are, are admitted for, are booked into the jail for fairly minor offenses. Um, the trespassing, refusing to leave, um, et cetera. And they get out really fast. So we sometimes would barely have a chance to realize that they're here before they appear in court and they're gone. And we really haven't done much to improve their situation. And unfortunately, we'll likely get a second or third chance to do so, um, down the line in those cases.
Just, just to make the point, if you add that on to the fact that in the statistics, about twenty-one percent of the population have some type of mental illness. I think that we're just again making the case that we, we do as a board need to commit a lot of resources to mental health. Because in what it seems, what I'm hearing is that basically these folks may not belong in jail in the first place. They probably need some type of mental health and, uh, just stability services to avoid going through the, the rigmarole of a, of a booking. So, would you agree?
I agree, and we, we, the system, in a broad sense, um, already spends a lot of resources to keep things the same. You know, just to keep people recycling through jails, ERs, homelessness, um, and, and eventual law enforcement contact, and you start all over again. And, uh, there does seem to be perhaps a wiser way, um, of committing our resources, which are already being spent on these folks as it is. Just to maintain a status quo.
I think that's the point, there can be a lot of money spent on, on recycling them through the system when, because it's not the right system for them.
Correct.
All right, and then just a, another question too, you, you mentioned that the female population has increased, is there any, any pattern you see there?
None that I'm aware of, that I can speak to you, that's, that's significantly different from, over the course of time. We have seen the, um, severity of crimes that women are accused of have, has increased a bit over the course of time. A little more violence, um, a little more involved in some gang and drug trafficking and so forth activity. Than what we had seen maybe ten years ago.
Good, and then you, you also had mentioned, uh, with the mental health population, what type of, um, if you can do it briefly, psychiatric and counseling services do we, do we have?
So we have, um, through...
One minute.
Through our, um, we have a couple of different venues for people to get those services. One is through our medical contractor, WellPath, where they have a psychiatric provider, um, as well as several licensed mental health practitioners on staff. And then we also have our own group of social workers, um, and we collaborate also with the Community Mental Health Center to provide services. That are more in preparation for people getting released. And so those, you know, people can engage with our county staff, they can engage with our contractor, they can also engage, um, with providers like the Community Mental Health Center. Or other providers in the community that our reentry services, social workers connect folks with.
Great, thanks.
Mike, in terms of the social workers, we had talked one time about, um, placing one that was specific on the mental health issues. Have we done that yet, or are we still looking at that?
That, it's kind of evolving in that direction as we speak. As you may recall during the, uh, when the pandemic hit. We were forced to repurpose all of our, um, reentry specialists to working virtual court. And they basically stopped doing what they were employed to do for probably ten or eleven, close to eleven months. And we did have a lot of staff turnover with that as a result in that area. So their current, they've been building up their staffing again and getting back into doing, um, the majority of the services that were kind of firmly in place before the pandemic hit. But I'll get a specific update as to how each one of those individuals is currently allocated and bring that to the board next month.
And as we look at dollars that are spent on mental health, um, and the way we provide services, I think one of the things that we can. Look at that I think would be highly supportive are more individuals being placed on the long-term injectable program. That, um, I think we've seen, um, some good results with the few that we've had. But, um, I think that that is one of the programs where, you know, you're spending money upfront, but you're spending it wisely.
Correct.
Because again, it's going to hopefully stop that revolving door, um, that they're coming through and we're getting hooked up with a, um, provider through the Community Mental Health Center. So that may be one we want to spend a little bit more, um, time and effort on to make sure that we can, um, expand that program. Okay, um, but again, the social worker specific to the mental health needs and the, I know the social workers all look at that. But I think if we had a specific one that dealt, um, with those, especially the discharge plans, I think we'd be further ahead.
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Just following up on a couple of things, um, the, um. Officers that are leaving, um, I think we've talked about this in the past. The composition of that in terms of like veteran officers or, or newer officers, uh, just generally, how is that?
Yeah, it's typically, um, you know, it, it, the vast majority of, of folks leave are leaving within, you know, their first three years for sure. Sometimes shorter than that. I, I think, you know, there's a lot of things that contribute to that, this is a hard job. And when folks haven't been employed with us for so long that they're invested both emotionally and financially in their, you know, in, into their careers here yet. There's a lot of other opportunities, you know, right now with the unemployment rate being so low. That they can go elsewhere and have an easier, uh, what I would call an easier job with less stress and, um. And then that, the issue with that, the challenging and disheartening thing is that just sort of compounds the issue for everybody who remains. Because that's another five shifts per week that we might be having somebody fill with a voluntary or mandatory overtime. And, um, so it is, you know, it's a, it's an issue that's impacting not just our department, but corrections across the state and across the country. And which is why, you know, our focus has to be on how do we mitigate the impacts of this work on, on people. And so they, um, so that they feel well enough and resilient enough and rewarded enough to stick with this profession through the difficult challenges that it presents.
Back to the, uh, racial demographics again, and the overwhelming majority, minority population in corrections. Breaking that out, leading all other categories are the African-American population at forty-four point one-one percent. That's, you know, four times plus what they are represented in our county's population. I, I just note on there, in the, in the breakout, the categories are black, white, Hispanic, Indian, Asian, and other. In light of the fact that yesterday was our first Indigenous Peoples' Day. It might be something to look at to change that categorization from Indian to Indigenous.
I believe that they follow. How the census tracks, so, but I think we can change our own labels, so. A good point.
The survey that you're doing, the employee survey, is that, is that going on right now?
So there will be, um, a second part, which I'll likely schedule for us to, um, deliver next week. We are doing this on paper rather than online, which I know seems antiquated, um, but we have some reasons for that. And so we have, um, what we did a few, you know, a month or so ago when we did the first half, as we had members of our leadership team. I also engaged, um, the FOP, um, the African-American Correctional Officers Association, and ULA, our three main unions. To also be present and help us administer this because, so there was buy-in and people knew that there was, you know. People worry about information that they submit, like making them a target for something, and which is, couldn't be further from the truth, but nonetheless, it still is a, um, something that some people talk about. So we will, we were present on a couple of different days of the week on all three shifts to administer that, and so we'll get the second part scheduled next week.
Just one last question relative to vaccination. Are, are vaccines available daily at the corrections for our staff and, um, the population?
Our staff could go get them in pretty much any day, we do weekly vaccinations, um, actually with the assistance of the Douglas County Health Department, um, for the incarcerated population.
And, and, uh, as far as the census population goes, are vaccines available daily to those folks?
To the...
To the population, to the...
We, we do a weekly clinic for our incarcerated folks.
I'm sorry?
For, for folks who are incarcerated, it's a weekly clinic.
Weekly?
Yeah.
Okay, and who provides the vaccinations?
It's a combination of our medical staff, our custody staff, and about six or eight weeks ago, the Douglas County Health Department began assisting, um, with those clinics as well.
Thank you.
Mike, you know, we talk a lot about, um, the folks in our correction facility. And especially when it comes to, um, the minority populations that we're serving. One of the things that I, I, I know there's a lot of conversations going on at all times, but, um, we, we really don't have a say as to who comes through our door. And so has there been either through the Criminal Justice Management Committee conversations, uh, conversations about, um, the arrest as a whole? So if you're looking at who's being arrested and you're looking at the populations, um, and the races being arrested at that level. I think we could actually find or maybe have more productive conversations about those issues. Because again, once they're arrested and come to our facility, um, you know, our job is to take them. We, we can't say yay or nay. And so, and one of the things the Criminal Justice Management Committee was set up to do was because you have all system players around the table to, um, talk about issues. And so to me, that might be one of the issues that we really take a look at, at that thirty thousand foot and drill down. You know, who's being arrested, what are the races of those being arrested, what are they being charged or brought, brought into corrections for? And maybe we would be able to make a little headway. We can sit here and, and talk about it all day, but again, our door is kind of open. We can't say, "We're not taking you, we're not taking you, we're not taking you," we just have to take them, anyone who comes to our door. So anyway, it's just an idea, you know, I, I, the, and I'll talk to Commissioner Friend about it as well. But I just think that that conversation may be a better conversation for us to have with that data than with just our data specifically. It, it has to be more data than just ours.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, no other questions or comments from commissioners, thank you, Mike?
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, is there a second? Please, a motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan to adjourn, please vote.
Motion, motion passes five to zero.
And after the Douglas County Board of Commissioners today, there will be a tour for those interested from the board, uh, to tour the correction facility. Next is the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Row call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend is absent. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, and item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next is our consent agenda, items A through L. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
We have one recognition proclamation, a resolution recognizing October 2021 as Black Maternal Health Month, Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to read the following resolution and then I'll turn over to Commissioner Boyle to have some comments. And my hope is that the person that requested it, Ashley Smye, Smye will be, be coming on here pretty soon. It reads, whereas a person's race should not determine their health outcome, and most importantly, pregnancy and childbirth should be safe for all Americans. And whereas the wom, whereas for women of color, especially black women, safety and equity has been tragically disproportionate in comparison to general population, and therein exists one of the single widest racial disparities in women's health. And whereas according to the Center for Disease Control, black women are three times more likely to die from a pregnancy-related cause, and black infants are more than twice as likely not to survive. And whereas multiple factors contribute to these disparities such as variations in quality healthcare, underlying chronic conditions, structural racism, and implicit bias, in addition to the social determinants of health have historically prevented many people from minority groups from having fair opportunities for economic, physical, and emotional health. And whereas ensuring that all women have equitable access to healthcare before, during, and after pregnancy is essential. And whereas to improve black women's maternal health, we need a comprehensive approach that addresses health across the lifespan, improves access to quality care, provides greater economic security to women, and uses policy to create systems change. And whereas local organizations like Ivy Black Girl are on the front lines along with various partners across Nebraska to address the inequities within the maternal health sector, the primary goal to expand access to quality, culturally relevant maternal health services. And whereas all Nebraskans must raise awareness of the state of black maternal health by understanding the consequences of systemic discrimination, recognizing the need for urgent solutions, amplifying the voices and experiences of black women, families, and communities and committee to build a world in which black women do not have a fear for their well-being, dignity, and lives before, during, and after pregnancy. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby declares and recognizes the month of October 2021 as Black Maternal Health Month in Nebraska, and encourages our residents to bring awareness to find solutions and utilize opportunities to change these tragic outcomes for black women and families. And with that, I would move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Maureen Boyle. Did you have any comments, Commissioner Boyle?
Yep, just a, just a couple of things. One is, of course, I'm an OB-GYN physician, and I, I see these disparities. And, and what I try to do just personally is, is it seems to be most often related to some type of cardiovascular disease. And so, for example, hypertension is a big problem postpartum, and, and what I try to do personally is try to just aggressively manage hypertension and those types of issues. So, so bottom line, this, this is real. This is something we would need to pay attention to. Fortunately, when we have things like preterm delivery, to be honest with you, if it's a, if it's a black boy or girl that's born, there's better outcomes than if it's a white boy or girl. So we need to do what we can though, however, to prevent those preterm births too. So a lot of it does have to do with social determinants of health, and I think once again, that's where we as a board come in. How do we, how do we stabilize home environments? How do we make sure that, that women are getting the care that they need in order to have healthy pregnancies and better outcomes? Remember, when babies are born prematurely and when, when mothers are not healthy, that's a cost to the healthcare system. So get away from it being just the right thing to do, but it's actually a financial hit too. So, so bottom line is, we need to do a better job of, of taking care of our, of our black women when they're pregnant especially, because that provides for better outcomes for their children as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the resolu, or on the proclamation? Larry?
Thank you. Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I know you all, I would like to think that you all mean well, but I'd like to suggest that you need to reword this proclamation. All across America, Americans like me are getting their backs up with all of our representatives who are continuating something referred to and misunderstood and always changed, referring to critical race theory. If I read, as I read this proclamation, which I did three times, there's an awful lot of words that need to be removed because I am sick and tired of being, hearing this every, every week, a new resolution or a new proclamation or a new item. Systemic racism, and we're still guilty of all this stuff. Excuse me, I'm not, and I'm sick and tired of celebrations on the courthouse lawn, lawn to continue this anti-American, anti-racist, turn it around and turn it inside down language. The Center for Disease Control does not operate in this chambers. You do. We elected you. We did not elect the Centers for Disease Control. We did not elect nationwide experts that are progressives to write proclamations for you, to continue this diatribe against Americans. Constantly, we are still all guilty of racism and systemic whatever. Excuse me, there's a constitution. You don't need this. The constitution protects all lives and black women's lives, but it doesn't promise health protection for everybody. We can't legislate that. It'll never work. But this continues to call anybody that's probably white, still guilty of statistic, systemic racism, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I'm sorry, if black women aren't getting good healthcare, that's not my fault. Why do you not go after those people? Issue some subpoenas for the people that are causing these problems. Don't blame me for it. Go after the people that aren't taking care of the black ladies. But take those words, I like black, out of here. This should be about all women's maternal health, okay? Let's stop this stuff. These bodies are gonna be flowing over with citizens like me. They are already. And the government is trying to say now that I'm a terrorist because I want to speak to my government. You people were elected by us to represent us, not national experts in their best practices. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me first, before I address the last statement, just say, Ms. Ashley Smye with Ivy Black Girl asked me to put this on. She can't get on, I know she's watching, and so I want to thank her and their group for the work that they've been doing, not only on this issue, but also on entrepreneurship and women-owned businesses. I'm gonna address this personally briefly, but I know I speak with her in respect to saying, there doesn't need to be any words removed, Larry. I think, you know, you're saying somebody is accusing you of something. Nobody's accusing you of anything. I think your guilt lies in your perceived innocence and ignorance on this issue, and you just need to study up on it. That's where the guilt lies, not you personally, but on the continual back and forth with this that has nothing to do with critical race theory. So with that, I want to thank them for their efforts and appreciate the time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, we did have a motion and a second. Please vote. Oh, I didn't see your hand.
I think your guilt lies in your perception, innocence, and ignorance on this issue, and you just need to study up on it. That's where?
Chris?
Hello, can you hear me?
She's on the line now, if you want.
Yeah, it looks like she is.
Hang on one second, Louise.
Hello?
Hi, this is Ashley. I think I figured out my technology. Thank you to Angel Starks, who was there, who assisted me.
Okay, you can go ahead and say a few words if you'd like.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Rogers, for bringing this forward. This is a very important issue, and we know that there is a larger conversation happening nationally around the well-being and healthcare, specifically of women of color. When you look at the disparities, when you talk about maternal health, so folks that have decided to give birth or in that birthing process, black women have disproportionate outcomes more than any other category or group of women. And so it is really important to address the systemic racism that is in our medical system that allow for black women to die while giving birth, going through the birthing process, and then postpartum, as our children are dying at higher rates before the age of one. And so, to the gentleman's point before, you know, we're not blaming anyone for this, but we do want to have accountability. We want to have accountability in that everyone that decides to give birth, that goes through that birthing process, has the healthcare support that they need in order to thrive. And we know that when you target those and support those that are disproportionately impacted by those outcomes, everyone will thrive. And so if you intentionally support black birthing people through maternal health, all women will benefit. And we have seen that to be true. We currently have the first and only statewide black maternal health coalition that we are organizing and convening. It has key partners like Health and Human Services, the Perinatal Collaborative, some of our major medical institutions like CHI, UNMC, City Matches there, and then black birthing workers. So we have doulas and midwives and doctors represented in order to co-create solutions that allow for us to address and move the needle on this issue. Black women, while giving birth, are two to three times more likely to die than our white counterparts. And there's no other answer besides institutional racism that needs to be addressed. And so I appreciate this commission really uplifting and naming that this is important for our county. If we don't address this, we won't be able to retain talent, we won't be able to have a thriving workforce, right? Like, our families will suffer. And so this is an important topic that by naming this proclamation, you all are acknowledging that and demanding accountability, so that all citizens within Douglas County can be healthy and thriving, and we're doing that by targeting those that are most impacted by the lack of equity in the maternal health sector. And so, again, thank you, Commissioner Rogers, for bringing this forward. All month long, we are doing intentional events around black maternal health, so we are having workshops, we are doing activities for birthing people, and really trying to bring an intentional lens to this work.
Thank you, Ashley. Louise?
Louise Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. Good morning. I think this is an important issue. For all the things that have been stated since, at the, since Larry, the constitution does suggest that everybody has the right to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, happiness and life and pursue happiness. Think they correlate to health. I often wonder how these recognitions and proclamations get placed on the agenda, but I normally don't have a problem with the subject matters. I think that each commissioner has to decide what their decision-making process is, and looking at different documents outside of the county's documents, I think that's important that you do, to get information that may not be available locally or that you need to go deeper into. So like relying on other, other materials for your decision-making, I think that's smart and logical, and just want to show my support for the resolution for Black Maternal Health Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. With that, there was a motion and a second. Please vote.
And we just need Commissioner Kavanaugh's vote. There we go. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to citizen comments. Anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda, please come forward.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I'd like to submit this. I kind of look at this body as the upper chamber of our legislative powers here in Omaha. And I want to say that this is a joint building, the Douglas County and the City Council. So therefore, I kind of expect equal representation from both bodies. But last week, something occurred that I'm going to speak about because it has to do with Americanism in the constitution, whether you like it or not. My rights were violated last week because certain people don't remember the rules that they themselves promulgated and practiced. They have it published. Sometimes they distribute it before you come in these chambers, but they violated their own rules, as they often did at the City Council. They didn't like what I had to say, so Mr. Brinker Harding felt he had to reply to me, as Mr. Rogers did a few minutes ago, without a chance for me to get back to them about their reply to me. These are not presentations where that's possible. These are hearings. But we don't get a chance to reply back to you because you have the power, sir, and so did Brinker Harding. His comments should have been ruled out of order by the president of the City Council because my comments were entirely legal and ruled out of order. I was escorted out of this room once again by a paid sheriff's deputy, at my expense, out of my pocket. I think that's unconstitutional, violation of my rights, but also the state constitution of Nebraska, as well as maybe the city charter. These rules need to be debated as a presentation or whatever it is, so that the public can go back and forth with you two or three times if necessary, because in any other topic, you or the City Council do not let citizens do that. But she liked to make comments as we walk away from the podium. How is that civic pride? How is that constitutional, ladies and gentlemen? That summarizes, it's all in the public record on the videos from last week or the 28th. So you can go back and study it, and please look, please do, and listen to yourselves, and then listen to the City Council on what they said. But then listen to what happened after I was escorted out of this building. There were two or three citizens other than myself that got to talk, and some, some of them got to go back and forth from their seats more than once, and they were off-topic, and they were not called out of order like I was. As a citizen, if I do not protest those type of things at this body, at this time, I forego my rights to sue you under the Open Meetings Act, as I understand it. And Mr. Rogers, I do a lot of reading. I am not ignorant of these things, so please do not imply that I am. Mr. Brinker Harding likes to say I'm uninformed. He likes to say that I, he gets tired every week. I'm down here saying the same thing. Well, maybe you people ought to change your rules and your behavior towards citizens, and then he wouldn't have to get tired of it. Maybe I'm tired of hearing the same thing every week, also.
One minute.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Louise?
Louise Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I want to talk about the vacant seat on your board. I miss Commissioner Mike Boyle a lot. I had the opportunity to speak with him on the phone and in person. And he was uh, somebody that challenged the systems here locally and nationally. He uh, even though he had a lot of experience in government. And as you move forward, I hope that the commissioners choose somebody that is not necessarily necessarily systems person, even though, you know, we, we do come together to be governed. But I think that the right person for the job, for Mr. Boyle's vacancy is um, is somebody that will challenge his fellow commissioners. And not uh, and not always want to be uh, with the majority for the sake of being with the majority. I think that uh, there are a lot of candidates that are not necessarily within uh, the systems that can still do good government. Hope you look at them seriously. Because uh, as the discussion has been going on, not just recent, not just today or recently, but for a long, long time, um, is that uh, there, there is uh, a driving force to racial inequality and that's um, economic inequality. For a long time, white people have made sure that money did not channel to minorities, um, that it would stay within uh, the, within white, white men. And that the Omaha and Douglas County was set up that way. Native Americans were removed from this area by the slaughter of the buffalo. It was very hor- uh, a bad situation. That, here, that's how it began. Um, and I'm not blaming any individuals that are alive today. But if we propagate a racist system of economic inequality, then you're going to have a lot of uh, problems that money can solve. Um, for example, access to healthcare, access to jobs, um, generational wealth, all these things. Uh, so I think that somebody that will challenge your uh, the systems would be a good candidate for this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move to presentations. We have our weekly presentation of the COVID-19 update and COVID-19 vaccination plan update presented by Dr. Lindsay Hughes. Good morning, Doctor.
And at the risk of being called out of order, I am going to speak on something out of turn for just a moment. I want to thank you for your recognition and your declaration of October as Black Maternal Health Month. This is an extremely important issue and I believe that there is nothing more American than recognizing when part of our population is not as able to pursue life, liberty, and happiness and addressing it thus. I would encourage every single person in this chamber right now to humble themselves and look inside to find those implicit biases that might be contributing to racism in our community, that might be leading to structures and to issues that uh, keep our black brothers and sisters from being able to get the healthcare and uh, live the lives that they deserve to be living and to really do the work. So thank you, commissioners, for your work in that area. And with that said, I will move on to our COVID-19 report. I continue to have good news for you. It's very nice being able to come to you and uh, have good things to report. Currently, we are sitting at 186.6 per 100,000 for our seven-day total number of cases. So we are coming on to our third week now, keeping this uh, case uh, total below 200. That is great news. And if you look at the chart, you will see below that we are not plateauing necessarily, but that we are actually decreasing in our case numbers. This is fantastic news. Um, of course, we're still keeping our eye on what's happening both nationally and globally to see if, you know, we can expect a change in this. Right now, this seems to be the trend in other places as well, uh, that we're kind of coming off of this wave. So fingers crossed that that's going to continue. I do want to caution everyone, though, that we are indeed still in the high transmission category. So this does not mean that the pandemic is over. This does not mean that we're out of the woods. We certainly still have plenty of COVID out there. It's still transmitting. We still have people hospitalized. Uh, we still want to keep in place those mitigation uh, techniques that we know are working. Uh, we still want people to go out there and get their vaccine. In fact, that's probably helping. Uh, but we do appear to be on a good path right now. So that is just wonderful. Looking at cases, um, so you can see a little bit more clearly what, what the little sawtooth looks like up close here. Uh, this is the weekly, and this has not been updated as of today, and that's because of the holiday from yesterday. So I apologize for that. So we'll have a new bar that pops up probably after uh, about two o'clock today. So uh, if you have interest, I would encourage you to go out to the dashboard and take a quick peek at this again. Uh, but basically, uh, last week what we saw was just a very small increase in our cases in our pediatric population. Uh, but overall, those also are, have been decreasing over time. Um, our school rate is flat at this point at 2.8 per thousand, which is what it was about a month ago. So it went down a bit, kind of came up just a little bit. It's essentially flat at this point. Uh, we do definitely continue to see some transmission in our schools. Uh, and we're working um, with our schools very closely to continue uh, contact tracing and, you know, doing the things that we need to do to stop those clusters and outbreaks that are happening. So some of this data may be just a little old because of that holiday yesterday. So I apologize for that, but we'll go through this anyway. All right. So this is our map of cases from last week. So this would have been through Saturday. And as you can see, um, we still continue to have um, most of our cases kind of on that horizontal line through central Omaha. Uh, and we'll look at the vaccinations here in a minute, so you can make a comparison there too. Um, so a little bit better than, you know, what we were seeing in previous weeks. So this is the week prior that you would have seen um, as a comparison again there. So you can kind of see those dark orange colors lighten up and show that cases have decreased in certain areas in our community. So um, looking at those decreasing rates. So that is, again, really good news. Hospitalizations, I wish I had better news for you there. We do continue to see quite a few hospitalizations. That's not necessarily a surprise. As we continue to have COVID-19, we're going to continue to have hospitalizations. Uh, staffing continues to be an issue in our hospitals pretty significantly. And so uh, having our hospitals be at near capacity is not necessarily surprising for us. As of um, yesterday evening, we were at 85% occupancy rate across the metro for our overall hospitalization. So there were 202 beds open out of 1,372. So not, pardon me, not many beds uh, were open. So just to put that into context for you, that's across the entire system. So there are hospitals out there that may not have any beds at all. Um, some may have a few. Um, so it's not that every single hospital has 85%, uh, you know, 15% open. Um, that's really across the entire system. So some hospitals certainly uh, do not have any beds at all to, to give for patients. Adult ICU care is this other blue line over to the left that you see. And we are currently at 83% occupancy for our ICUs. So um, we're still maintaining fairly high there as well. Still continuing to see, you know, a high acuity level uh, with our COVID patients there. Um, we have 87% occupancy taken up for our pediatric beds. So we do continue to see quite a few RSV cases, which is a large component of the pediatric issue there. Uh, five of those are confirmed COVID cases. So a small handful for pediatrics. Most of the other beds for peds are taken up with RSV and other things. Again, we have some other respiratory illnesses and other things going on in the community, adenoviruses and such. It's that time of year. And so we're, we're starting to see, you know, hospitalizations from other, other issues as well. And then for ventilators, uh, we continue to use quite a few vents. Uh, we're up at 38. So we uh, you know, there for a while, we're up in the like upper 20s. Now we're in the upper 30s. So um, we'll keep our eye on what's happening there. Again, we have about 400, 440 ventilators in the metro area. So um, again, the issue there is that we don't necessarily always have the staff to run all those vents. So we have plenty of machines, uh, maybe not necessarily plenty of people to run them though. But at this point, I hear that we're basically doing okay on ventilators. So we're good there. Talk a little bit here about some vaccination data for you. Uh, our breakthrough rate currently is at 1.2%. So again, that's the number of people who have been fully vaccinated, who have gone on to develop a COVID infection and had a positive test. So 1.2 is where we're sitting for that. And then if you want to uh, look at death, basically death rates from that, it's um, it's extremely small. So 0.009%. Uh, so that is good news. Uh, we know that the vaccines continue to work well. Um, and then of course, we are starting to do boosters. Um, and of course, the third doses have been going on for a little while now. So um, over time, we will probably see the breakthrough rate start to go down. All right. So vaccinations, we had a nice little spike uh, in late September. And a lot of that was likely uh, folks coming in to get their third dose or boosters. Um, we have as of today, given in, in Douglas County, so not, not just the health department, but all providers, have given 18,730 third dose and boosters. Um, unfortunately, I can't break that out by third dose or booster, but basically those extra doses, um, that's how many we've given of those. And then 17,829 of those were to Douglas County residents. So most of those are, are to the people who live here within our boundaries. All right. For our eligible population, 73.5% have had one dose, 60.8% of our total population here have had one dose. For fully vaccinated and our eligible population sits at 68.9%, our total population sits at, sits at 57%. So we do continue to move up there. Uh, again, it's slow and we definitely have a lag with our black population. Um, and I'll talk just a little bit about some of our efforts there here in just a moment. Our 12 to 17-year-olds, so our adolescents, uh, we continue to slowly get some doses there. As you can see, that's fallen off just a little bit. Uh, 63.1 have had one dose and 56.7 have, uh, are fully vaccinated at this time. And we do continue to visit the schools uh, to, to offer that. All right. And maps. So here's our map. It looks very similar to what it has looked like in previous weeks, but you will remember from the case maps where we kind of continue to have a lot of cases is that Elkhorn zip code and then across uh, the middle there, uh, where we have lower vaccination rates. So that is some, somewhere that we are certainly uh, trying to focus. Uh, I've had some great conversations with our faith-based community in North Omaha to uh, brainstorm some ideas there. And they have uh, some events that are coming up at the end of October to hopefully uh, boost their vaccination rates and actually offer some vaccination events for their congregations. And not just their congregations, but even uh, the communities surrounding their congregation. So we're really excited about that. And we, we're continuing to have some conversations about uh, how that might look and how we can uh, best support that work. So uh, we're really looking forward to that. Uh, we also have worked with the MOCaDOCs to put together uh, some information and some uh, PSAs that might be able to go out through channels, uh, especially in North Omaha, to uh, basically be those trusted voices, uh, hopefully that will encourage people to get in and get their vaccinations ahead of uh, the new approvals that are coming down the pike. And I'm sure everybody has some questions about the new approvals coming down the pike. So I'll touch on that very quickly. So later this week, there are a couple of meetings scheduled with the FDA. They'll be discussing booster doses for Moderna and the J&amp;J vaccines. I know those have been hot topics. A lot of people have been very concerned, especially with the J&amp;J. Uh, so we will keep our ear to the ground, uh, definitely later this week as, as those meetings happen. Um, and you know, if, if it comes about that they approve those booster doses, we will uh, make those available. Um, that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be difficult. We have a lot of stock. Uh, most providers have ways to make things available fairly quickly, even more quickly than the health department does a lot of times. So we will uh, make that happen as quickly as possible. Um, if it's not approved right away, I would expect that um, additional meetings may be scheduled. So that could also be the case. And then for the pediatric dosages, which, or the pediatric vaccine, which I know a lot of people are kind of hanging on by a thread waiting for that. It sounds like the meeting for that particular topic is scheduled for October 26th. So we will, we will all be uh, probably trying very hard to get as much information out of that as it's happening as possible. Um, so hopefully they're going to approve, and that one is just for Pfizer, just a reminder. Uh, hopefully they will approve, approve that at that time. That is, they are asking for full approval for that pediatric vaccine. So uh, hopefully that happens. And once that happens, it'll go to CDC and their advisory committee, which is ACIP. Usually their discussions happen fairly quickly. And then we would have the official recommendation from CDC and be able to move forward from there. So fingers crossed, by Halloween, first of November, somewhere in there, we could be potentially uh, vaccinating our youth. And we are having conversations at the health department currently about how best to ensure rollout for that. Um, there are uh, a number of different avenues that we should be able to offer that, including, of course, at the schools. Um, all of the superintendents I talk to at least once a week. Um, and they're, they're very aware that we're willing to come in and set up however it works best for them to, to help get their kiddos taken care of. So we're working together uh, to make all of those things happen. So hopefully, hopefully we'll be able to get a large portion of that population taken care of too. And we can further improve where we're sitting with this pandemic. And with that, I think that's all I have. And with that, I think that's all I have and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Positivity rate percentage is what?
7.2 today.
And that's down from last week, I believe, a little bit, isn't it?
It is.
It's a good indicator. The total cases in Douglas County, you know, the numbers you have showing total cases are 84,512 in Douglas County, right?
Yes.
Okay. The total deaths in Douglas County?
801. We did add three this morning, keeping in mind they didn't all die this morning. They could have, that could have occurred over the past couple of weeks. It takes time for us to get those reports.
In addition to the 801?
Right, I don't think those three would be reflected here.
Okay, so 804, right?
Correct.
Okay. A couple of things on that. The, the gender breakout of the deaths. Been following that on the, on the national level. And then on the COVID-19 health department dashboard, it appears that the deaths break out to be 56.9% male and 43.1% female. Is that right?
That appears to be correct.
Is there some reason that we have such a disproportionate male female breakout?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. I would be happy to explore that with my epidemiologists and see if they can tease that out. I don't know that there is anything significant that has floated to the top, that has triggered anyone's suspicion at this point, but we can sure look at that.
Okay. And in the entire population, the 65 and older folks account for 79% of all deaths?
That is true.
The racial demographic indicates that the white population here accounts for 74.9% of all deaths. Is that, is that correct? It's a little hard to see.
Yep, yes, that, so 74.9% of COVID-19 deaths, correct.
And then in the underlying conditions, I'm a little confused of the graphic here. It's got cardiovascular, then it has a red line and a, a blue line, is it?
Yeah, it's because the chart is small, so it's not popping up every label for you. How's that?
So are those both under the cardiovascular or is the blue different than the cardio?
No, the blue is diabetes. So it, it just wasn't displaying every, if you enlarge this, it will actually give you those labels underneath. So you'll see that a little bit better. So cardiovascular, you know, and that encompasses a number of different diseases. But that, that would be the number one underlying condition that we see in, in deaths, COVID deaths. The second would be renal. And I'm not, and I'm thinking that it's displayed this way just because it kind of separates those bars out a little bit. So it's a little easier to look at. But the, yeah, so diabetes is that blue line that's in there, which actually is like fifth.
Okay, so going down that graph, there are four that, that lead. Cardiovascular is number one.
One minute.
What's the second one? Second leading?
Renal, so that would be kidney disease.
And the third?
Neurological.
And the fourth?
Respiratory.
Okay. The vaccines for the regular flu and the shingles, you recommend that people go and get those now?
Absolutely.
And those are widely available in our community, right?
Yes.
The deaths and the breakthrough, and we might have to come back on this. You indicated are 0.009%, but the breakthrough itself is 1.2%. So is that 0.009% of 1.2% or are they overall?
It would be, it would be of those who were vaccinated. So the deaths, so let me go over there, just so people can see what we're talking about. So this would be of the people who were, who got all of the vaccine, 28 of them died.
We'll come back.
You'll have to come back to that.
Okay.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Just gonna take you down a little bit of a different road since it's maternal, Black Maternal Health Month. Just a reminder that 30% of, of pregnant women are vaccinated. That's, that's a low number and that the CDC does fully recommend the COVID vaccine for all pregnant women, finding that they're immunocompromised. And when women get COVID when they're pregnant, it has much, much, much worse outcomes than if, if they have had the vaccine and have any side effects from that. So just to clear, just to make the point again, COVID does increase the risk of stillbirth and it does increase the risk of preterm delivery and growth restricted babies due to issues with the placenta and the blood clotting that occur, that can occur with, with having COVID, not the COVID vaccine. The COVID vaccine has been proven safe in pregnancy. So neonatologists, those who specialize in preterm birth are saying that some of their hospitalizations we're seeing in our information here is a result of COVID. So I was wondering if there are any initiatives to increase the vaccination rate among Black pregnant women?
So we do have our initiatives that we're working on to increase Black vaccination rates overall. I wouldn't say that we have targeted pregnant Black women yet, but I think that it's a fantastic thought and idea to, to do that because you're absolutely right. The risk of having COVID infection is much higher to your pregnancy than a COVID vaccine. In fact, COVID vaccine is protective to your pregnancy.
And there's even thought perhaps that the antibodies do transmit to the baby, which means baby gets protected from COVID as well. So there's still information out there kind of leading that way.
Yes, indeed.
Yep. And then just to allude to what Commissioner Kavanaugh was talking about. You mentioned the, the flu vaccine. Is there, if you have the COVID vaccine one day or the, and the flu vaccine the next, or if you had COVID, do you have to wait to get the flu vaccine?
Not at all. You can get the flu vaccine even concurrently with your COVID vaccine. So you can get both on the same day, a lot of places. So check first before you go in. But yes, you can get, you can get your flu shot, the next day you can get your COVID shot. It doesn't matter, just go get them.
And then you also mentioned where the occupancies of the hospitals again. We're still well over 80%. And I think we have to remember that our hospitals are backing off on elective surgeries still. So we're not completely up to, to full strength right now in doing the things that we were doing a couple of years ago. So these rates are, are concerning in that we're not able to get, get people in who say, you know, need a, a knee replacement or something like that. So, so bottom line is these, these numbers, they improving just a tiny bit, but we're still occupying a lot of beds with these conditions. So people who need, who would like other quasi elective surgeries, they're, they're being delayed if there can be a weight to it. So it's, I think that's an important point to make is this is a, it's still, it's still occupying a lot of beds, COVID is.
Yep.
And just, this is, these are crystal ball questions. This one is, at, at what point do you think we might not be calling this a pandemic, but endemic instead? Because it feels like this is kind of the way we, we might be living life from here on out.
I have gotten that crystal ball question several times in the past week. So I actually have done some digging to see what other experts might think, what their crystal balls are telling them. What I am seeing a lot is hopefully spring, April, May timeframe. A lot of epidemiologists, I'm, when I say I'm looking at other experts, I'm really reading what other epidemiologists are, are talking about because they're, they are the gurus in looking at patterns of disease in populations. So their, their word to me is gold. So other epidemiologists, this is their whole life right now, really looking at the spring timeframe to hopefully have this thing to a point where we're.
One minute.
It's, it's something that is there, yes, but it's, it's more of a, just kind of an annoyance in our, in our lives that we have to deal with and not, not this thing that's kind of consuming everything for us. So fingers crossed that they're right. We, you know, we kind of thought we were there this, this summer too. And then we had this Delta wave. One thing that has been positive is that some of the other variants that have emerged since Delta have not been able to push Delta out. So if Delta is kind of the worst that we have and, and we've gotten through this wave, hopefully we're going to be able to deal with whatever comes, you know, in the next months to come. But we'll see. That is all, that, this is all speculation at this point. So please don't take my word as the gospel.
Thanks. Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you for your presentations each week. And also have the flu vaccines that we get the shots for, is that scheduled yet? I just wondered for the county employees that will that be going out soon?
Yes, so I, they are scheduled. I'm just not sure if the email has come out yet about when they are happening. So keep your eyes open because I would, I would think that they're coming very soon. They, they are scheduled in October though.
Okay.
Yes.
I haven't seen it yet. I don't know if anyone else has.
I think there was one date that got maybe switched. So it may have gotten delayed coming out, but yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Just on that point, there's the shingles vaccine too.
Yes.
Is that okay to do, like the flu vaccine contemporaneous with getting the, the COVID vaccine?
Yes, that's fine. Any vaccine is fine to get concurrently or in close approximation time wise with the COVID vaccine. There shouldn't be any limitations there.
Same with booster, right? I mean, the booster is basically the vaccine.
Correct. It's exactly the same as that initial series. The exact same vaccine as that initial series. It's just an, it's, it's a booster. It's the exact same formulation. So yes, you can get that concurrently with any other vaccine.
So I've had people ask, I had the Pfizer, can I, or I've had the Johnson and Johnson or the Moderna, can I get the Pfizer booster? What's the word on that?
So there is no recommendation to mix vaccines. There's no data on the efficacy or the safety of mixing vaccine types like that. I would recommend that people just hang tight. We're going to have more information coming out later this week on the Moderna and the J and J in terms of boosters. If they've had an initial series, you know, they have protection. They're, they're currently protected. So, you know, we, we feel pretty good about that. And more information on their particular brands booster will be coming hopefully very soon.
And on these crystal ball estimates, you know, we're all concerned about, of course, when we'll get out of this eventually. But I think you indicated that the, the kids, is it under 12 now, the unvaccinated cohort of kids?
Correct.
Would possibly be looking at vaccines available Halloween time, first of November?
That's again speculation. Things can change. But based on when the meetings are scheduled, that's what we're keeping our fingers crossed for.
One last question. I didn't catch it, but the percent of ventilators in our community that are currently in use is what?
Oh, you're gonna make me math on the spot, aren't you? So, so I, I will tell you, we have, we have 38 in use and we have, they're for COVID. About 150 that are in use total, 150 to 170 that are in use total. And there are about 440 available in our metro area.
So we're not up against it in terms of the capacity?
No, no. And that, that subject comes up with the hospital coalition from time to time. And it, I am not sensing that anyone feels a push with the ventilators. But again, staffing is where, you know, we, we can have 50 ventilators lined up, ready to use. But if we have one nurse, that's not going to help anybody. Well, it'll help one or two people.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Dr. Hughes, the, the positivity rate at 7.2, we, did you say last week or the week before that we had to be at five in order to move down a notch from high?
Well, so there are two different variables that impact where we, where we're sitting on that transmission tracker. And it basically goes to the higher one with, if, if one of those variables is high. So five would be fantastic, but as long as our case counts are high, we're gonna still be in the high. So we need, at this point, yes, our case positivity is looking better, but we need that case count to drop under 100 per 100,000 for us to move down into the substantial. And then it would have to be under 50 to move to the moderate. So it's, it's better than both of them being high.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And then on the breakthrough cases, are we keeping track? I mean, it's very interesting to me, like the Elkhorn 68022 was from early on, one of the highest vaccinated areas in our county. Is there any correlation to the breakthrough cases in, in those zip codes? So are we keeping track of the zip code, of the breakthrough cases by zip code?
I don't think we have plotted that, but that would be interesting and I can certainly ask for that.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, it's, I don't know. To me, they were early on, one of the highest. They've been the highest with cases, if you will. And, and now I'm just curious if the breakthrough cases are following suit. And then of course, last week, you know, which vaccine are the breakthrough cases are we seeing? And we still don't have info on that.
Yeah, and there, there are some disagreements about whether to do that for a variety of reasons. But we, we have not been able to, to parse that out very well at this point. Part of that is just how we get the data. But we'll, we'll continue having conversations about that. I think as we get more booster, it's, it's gonna be less of a, an issue and less of a discussion. I mean, we know that J and J overall had slightly less efficacy than the other two. So it, it probably makes sense in people's minds that you would have more breakthroughs with J and J than you would maybe with Pfizer or with Moderna, which seems to retain efficacy quite well. But we don't know that that's actually true in the data. I would, I would think that nationally, they're probably looking at that information and we would see that, we would see something on that sometime soon.
Well, and again, I mean, Pfizer was the first one.
Yeah.
And if, if the timeline of its effectiveness is four to six months.
Right.
Then that makes sense, that there would be more breakthroughs with Pfizer. And then again, the booster is, is the first to come. And so maybe that will drop off. And then of course, you have Moderna, you know, and again, it came a little bit after.
Exactly.
Same kind of timeframe for, for months being effective.
Yep.
And we're waiting for the booster. So I don't, I mean, people automatically want to go to this, you know, negative issue about whether or not we should look at that data. But I just think it's, it's interesting to us. And the more information that we have on the vaccines and what they do, the better off we are in individuals, but also in convincing people.
Absolutely.
To get vaccinated.
And that timeframe issue is one of the things that, that creates some consternation with people when it comes to looking at that data because it rolled out at different times. Oops, I'm sorry. It rolled out at different times. And so that, that can, if you're not very careful in how you do that study, it can skew that data.
Right.
I would think that as we have these conversations with the FDA and then hopefully CDC and ACIP coming up, more data is going to be released from the manufacturers. We may have more information on breakthroughs that's actually coming from the manufacturers that would have come from their trials, not necessarily epidemiologically from our populations. But we would have at least some of that data to talk about. But we'll have to wait and see what they actually put out publicly.
I'm gonna run out of time and so I'll have you stop it and then I'll know what else is in the queue. I have one last question. And that is we're hearing not only of the federal government and what the mandates are for the vaccines. We've also seen some employers here in the county that are mandating their employees get vaccinated. Are we keeping track of all of the employers that are mandating vaccines?
We don't have a list of all of the employers that, that have opted to do that. That's, it's really up to the, you know, those employers to make those decisions. We don't track that necessarily. And I don't, I don't know who all of them are. And I don't, I don't know who all of those, who all of those people are.
All right, all right. Thank you. I was just curious because again, there's a lot of talk about this federal mandate
Yeah.
And that will affect us as a county. But I was just curious if anybody's tracking in our county who's mandating and who's not.
No, not at this point, we're not.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
What you just said about the employees, and I know that's a concern, and also at some point, we're probably going to be talking here, you know, at the correction facility because we do receive several million dollars of funds from the federal government and that mandate could come down. And I think that'll have further discussion here because we're already, as we heard this morning from Mike, substantially understaffed there right now. And I know we've all received some correspondence about that. So I think that'll be for a later time. But it is concerning when you can't get those numbers wherever it is. I don't care if it's Walgreens or, you know, 911 or whatever, we're faced with some real challenges.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, thank you. And thank you again for being here. Good information.
Thank you.
With that, no other questions or comments on that presentation. We'll go to committees and there's just under finance, the budget report as presented. And then under human services, resources, it's the weekly personnel report from civil services presented. No legislative items at this time. We do have need for an executive session for labor negotiations. So is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.